You're watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the November 15th meeting of the Michigan City Common Council Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting at www dot access laporte county dot org.
Order, and we are here this evening to discuss the, let me get the titles proper. Amending section 58 dash 60 of chapter 58 of the Michigan City Municipal Code, and amending various sections within chapter 98 of the Michigan City Municipal Code pertaining to garbage, trash, and rubbish. And the other part of the workshop, the second ordinance, will be creating section 22 dash 70 and section 50 dash 151 in the Michigan City Municipal Code to require a solid waste disposal plan, produce applications to the Michigan City Planning and Inspection Department for building an electrical HVAC and/or plumbing permit, and creating section 22 dash 82 C in the Michigan City Municipal Code to require that a building site be cleaned and all construction abrasions be removed before a certificate of occupancy is issued. And the final thing that we will discuss this evening will be the pricing structure for the sanitary bulk, refusal, disposal, and collection. So, what I'd like to do is, I know that we had the workshop three weeks ago pertaining to the same thing, and just to go with some quick notes that we had there is we discussed a very few violations that were written by the refuse inspector in 2022 and 2023. And that possibility that each citizen can get one free pickup, getting information out to the public was a item of discussion. Of course, putting it on the city website, we have the community focus and planning a informational note in the water bill. And Councilman Paul Prispolinski was not happy that landlords are not being held responsible and asked that the planning department, if the inspection department keeps track of bad and good landlords when it comes to picking up the rubbish and throwing out rubbish and trash, who the real offenders are. Sanitary superintendent stated that digital tracking is going to be provided for refuse director Connie Adams, and this will provide better inventory of pickups. And the building is going to be set by the sanitary district at their next board meeting, which is not true. The pricing has not been set by the board, and according to the city council's attorney, the city council is the body that will set the pricing for picking up the rubbish. And that's all the notes I had from that to report on there. So, the first ordinance that we're going to talk about is the one with the rubbish. Okay, and let me get my marked up copy. Okay, got that. All right. And what I'd like to do is like to get this done within an hour. Okay, six o'clock, we'll be done with this. So, starting with the first ordinance, the one with amending section 58 dash 60 of chapter 58 of the Michigan City Municipal Code, and amending various sections within chapter 98 of the Michigan City Municipal Code pertaining to garbage, trash, and rubbish. Are there any comments, concerns, discussion that anyone would like to bring up?
Well, I want to say that on your note about what I was in, and not in, very happy about is that there was no record. I asked a question if there was any record keeping being done, and/or even a list being developed, and there was no such answer in affirmative.
Are you talking about good landlord or bad landlord?
Yeah, good and bad landlords, to quote unquote from one of the inspectors. And then there was also...
And there is no list.
There was no list, or not even using the list that was provided by the county that I went and got out of the ass for from the assessor's office, and that, there's a, the further discussion came out later on at the council meeting about there's no phone numbers. Well, according to what I was told by the assessor's office, that there are phone numbers available, but they are held in privacy for the owners, and that, what I was told, that they would release them on a case-by-case basis, and/or by a request for informational public document by another department, but to be held in a, no, not to be made as, if there's a request, they would possibly be given out. So, that was one of the things surrounding the phone numbers, that they are not a mandatory list at the county, that it's a voluntary list, and that, but there is a working list that they could work off of, and knowing at least who the owners are, and you could try to, people made it sound more complicated than what it really is, but I think the main thing is that some kind of record keeping needs to be started somewhere at some time.
Good point.
You know, and I think that there's no, I don't believe I see any so far on these ordinances of a violation list or any such document. I might overlook it, but I don't think it's there. That's what I will refer to on that ordinance, our creating this ordinance, and also the, I see a problem in it also on, it's not identified.
What page?
I'm on the very first page. Pardon? I'm on the very first page on this, creating section 22 70 and section 50 dash 151 in the, that's a different ordinance.
We're not, yeah.
We're talking about the trash and rubbish ordinance?
Okay, I'm, excuse me on that. Well, it's still the same, the same premise under trash and rubbish, on the violators and who they are, and things of that nature, everything I talked about.
All right, so you're saying the same thing as far as record keeping?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, I made note of that. Are there any other concerns, questions about this ordinance? I just have a couple, Mike, you may be able to answer them real quick. Okay, all right. Let's see. You know, we talked about, okay, toters, and the excessive use of toters, and maybe who's getting away by using toters and using our department versus going out and getting waste management or a, you know, Republic? And so I brought it up to Mike, the Queens apartment, okay, across from Queens over on Barker, out there, yeah, I drove to pass her one day, because somebody brought it to my attention, and they got 30, 35 toters there, and they used the refuse, our refuse department for their waste disposal. And, you know, I don't know if that's the way, and so I asked Mike to look into it to see if that is okay, you know, since they do pay property taxes, I'm sure that they use our refuse department, but do all the other apartment complexes use our refuse department? I know that the one out there on Paz Road, can't think of the name of the big...
Canterbury.
Pardon?
Canterbury.
No, not Canterbury, the one that's on...
Long Beach.
Yeah, they have waste management. Is that the county? That's not the county, is it?
No, that's a private sector.
Pardon?
That's a private sector.
It's commercial, I mean, I think it's probably considered commercial since it's so many units.
But we shouldn't, apartments be too, that's what you're saying, because apartment complex, they should be using a commercial, they should get a big dumpster, use a commercial dumpster.
Yeah, well, that's why the Queens apartment is private.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's what I'm bringing up, why are we providing them refuse pickup when possibly, I could say, I don't know how long it takes, a little 30 totes in a garbage truck, but, I don't know, 15 minutes, 20 minutes maybe?
About that.
Yeah, and, you know, and then we got to provide them with totes, and if one comes up missing, then we got to get them another tote, you know, the whole gamut that goes with this thing. So, that's, let's check that out, Mike. Can we check that out?
Yes.
And see?
Yes, we can.
The legalities behind that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that's one of the questions I had. And assuming this container issue that we had, the tote issue, and we had to give ARP money for, I don't know, 95 totes or somewhere in that neighborhood, are we keeping, do we have an inventory now of how many totes were given away, who's got the totes? Because I don't want to come back every year and say, hey, we need another 100 totes, you know? Somebody's got to keep track of what we're doing with these things.
Is that in GIS or anything? Do we have a record or database of the totes per address?
Yes, we do. We have, we have a, on, to every address, by every tote, they got a serial number on it, is that, is addressed to that home, to a house, wherever we deliver it to, and we have it at our shop, where if somebody calls and says they towed a missing, we can look up that address, look up that number, and try to go find.
You think it's pretty accurate, Connie?
No.
Huh?
No.
No? Yeah, that's what I thought, that's what I always think too. Okay.
They got wheels, but I think they got movers too, because they just...
Oh, yeah, they probably go all over the place, don't they?
If I may comment on the toters, there has been conversation about what would be the appropriate number of toters to accommodate each residence, and, you know, some, I've heard some concern about having only one toter, that that might be problematic for residents, that perhaps two toters would be appropriate for residents, but certainly no more than that without extra fees. I don't know what the council's feelings might be about the number of toters that should be allowed for each resident.
I agree with that. I think two, two is a good number.
What's that?
I think two is a great number.
Two toters per unit?
Or if it's done by square foot or something, number of rooms, I don't know what that looks like, but I think that two toters is the max that anybody should have.
That'd be equivalent to six 32 gallon cans. Each toter, you can put about three 32 gallon cans in each toter, so that'd be equivalent of six cans, two toters.
And let people opt in thinking, and maybe they don't need to. We only fill our, our two up when we have company, maybe three times a year, three, four times a year maybe, when we have everybody at home, but outside of that, we don't.
Right, you know, I mean, we have two people in my house, me and my wife, and we got one toter, and it's just fine, even when we had the two kids at home, one toter was just sufficient, fine, you know? Yeah. So, I'm not, I'm not leaning to go with two toters per residence, because that there, I don't know how much of an expense that would be, but I think that would be kind of...
Well, right now, you got some that has four or better.
Pardon?
Right now, you have some that has four toters or more at one residence.
Yeah, I know, I see them around, I see them around. Okay, I don't know, so, you know, is that a discussion for this group, or is that a discussion for the sanitary district?
Honestly, I don't know, like, I would argue, but anyway, as far as the number of toters, I think, my thinking is that we would collect the extra toters, that if anyone has more than two, assume that the council opted for two toters, or whatever the number of toters is decided upon, any extra toters that we find in the city, we would confiscate, whatever, and then they would be available, extra toters would be available to residents at a cost, whatever that's determined to be.
Okay.
I don't know if that would, that would be an appropriate approach, might, some people might be upset if they had four toters, but I know there have been cases where, as I understand it, some residents were using the toters for storing materials or things, using it as an organizer, but it's really obviously not intended for that, it's intended strictly for trash.
I don't think that's in here, so, I think we could look at that, I think that's a good thing to look at, though.
Yeah, I think that's something that we could maybe look into, maybe see what other cities do, you know, see what South Bend does, see what Elkhart does, see what Mississauga does, if they give their people one toter or two toters, I don't know.
Well, we checked with Portage, and, we checked with Portage, we went over there and visited them, they charge $10 per month for any extra toter, and you also have to sign a year contract for that, for that total for a year, so you at least going to pay a hundred and twenty dollars for that year for that extra toter.
So, they get one?
They get one.
They get one.
But if you want another one, you have to sign a contract, $10 a month for at least a year.
What city was that?
Portage.
Really?
Yeah.
You find most cities are like that, though.
Yes.
And I got a picture, copy of ladies bill over in the port, I didn't get her name on that toter, I keep that confidential, but it shows they, they charge $12.99 for trash pickup each, for each home.
Every month.
Every month, a service fee. We don't.
Portage is something similar. They don't track.
Yeah, they charge a lot plus that's the wrong, extra toll.
Yeah, they do, yeah. We were ones that, that, don't know.
Okay.
Are they private collectors over there? They don't have their own department?
No, I think that's like waste management or something like that over there.
Yeah, and that's why they're being charged at, and, well, I'm going to...
Over in the port.
Over the port, sorry.
I'm going to reference to something, quite a few years ago, and that they wanted to, there was one council person that wanted to eliminate the sanitary collection altogether, and we commenced a study to see how much they get charged and how much the sanitary district does it for in Michigan City, and the Michigan City sanitary district was way below the cost factor of what an outside collector wanted to charge. So, I think that if, back then, if we were doing it efficiently, and we didn't have to charge anybody no service fees or anything, I think that can still be done today, as long as people are held accountable for violating, you know, that are the big problems in our community, and having a fee structure so it covers the cost of disposing of the goods. And I do know that, seeing what I'm looking at, is I wanted to see, I can see all the language in the world, but I wanted to see some statistics that, to make an educated decision about this. And I think that depending on the load that you're taking to get rid of, versus weight, and you have a driver involved, and you have mileage on the truck involved, is any of that here right now, to give me an example?
Yeah.
Well, then, I can't make an educated guess, not guess.
It's in this that we haven't gotten to yet.
It's in that?
Yeah. Yeah, Mike put together a, Mike put together a fee structure for small loads and large loads pickups.
Councilman Paul, can I add something to that?
Yeah, sure.
As far as the, the fee structure though, with waste management and the fees and us, the one thing that we miss out on is we don't put any money aside for capital. So, our trucks, so if you add all the trucks we have to buy into it, we may not be as low for the maintenance and all of that, but I think there's those trucks, million dollar trucks, we don't, if we had some type of fees that we were, you know, at least for the toters, we could have, because how much should we pay on toters? Mary Lynn, was it a half million?
I don't, I don't.
It was a lot, it was a couple hundred thousand dollars we spent on new toters alone, off the truck.
Well, what I'd like, what I'd like to do, what I'd like to do, let's just stay with the ordinance right now, and then we're going to go to this fee structure, and then we'll talk about the fee structure, okay?
Let me, let me, before you cut me off, let me say this, is that this is not, this is a fee structure, but it's not in ordinance form. And what I'm looking at is this, you know, when you get a load, what I'm sitting here trying to figure out is that, how the hell did we get to this point when Mr. Kinsel used to make money off of the way he ran the department? And that still baffles me. Well, what's going on is that people aren't, and I'm not saying you guys, that people aren't keeping track of our problem, children, and, you know, then this costs us a lot of money, so now we're trying to catch up, so does that mean, does that mean that you're going to, because I'm already paying in to the rate, paying into the, there's a rate on our tax levy for the sanitary district, there's also one for, what else? To recycle trash pickup in the, in the community. So, now you're saying that we should be charging them for the toters that were bought, and, you know, that...
Extra, extra toters.
Extra toters, if somebody wants an extra toter.
Oh, all right, okay.
Extra toters.
So, now, we already got the toters assigned, and, you know, I think you need to look at, do some of these rental buildings need a dumpster, so we're not, I mean, this is, there's a lot to it, and just saying, okay, we're going to make $20, okay, I'm reading this, $20 a month as a minimum one-year obligation, all right? So, basically, you're just, are we buying, are we buying the toter in the long run? And after one year, we don't, it's ours, and, but that's not the way I see it in this, in this sheet, you know? It says at one time, one-year obligation.
Well, we're, okay, we're staying, let's just stay focused on this ordinance right now, and then we're going to go to that, to the cost of things. All right, uh, okay, get back to the ordinance. Okay, in, for tonight's workshop, these are for you. No, those are, the one with the pink clip on it is. All right, let's see, moving on, let's see, Queens apartment building, we talked about that, Mike's could look into these other apartment buildings that we got around town to see how they should be dealt with, how many containers, houses, uh, okay. A question I have with the refuse, and this is kind of a sidebar question, so there was an issue at 2510 Buffalo Street, okay, and I think you and I talked about it, Connie, but I know Mike and I did, where all this trash was in the, in the, it was in the alley, it was in the garage, it came all the way out to the alley, lady called me up, went over there, and I don't think, it wasn't you, Connie, it was your, your side partner, your partner there?
Tank.
Your assistant, yeah, talked to him, they went over there and cleaned up the stuff that was pouring out of the garage. My point is, and he didn't know anything about it, when he's got, no, they did, they took a picture of it, well, I think Gonder was, the truck driver, the garbage picker that day, anyway, when your guys see that, do they call you and say, hey, Connie, we got an issue here, we got an issue there, or is it up to you to ride up and down these alleys and find this stuff?
Sometimes my drivers notify us, but when I'm out, I go through the routes, and sometime I run on it, but most of the time, they call when there's a big mess like that, hey, we need to come and check this out.
Yeah, right. Well, I would hope, I would hope that they would do that, that's part of, to me, that's part of their job. If they see something that's a mess like that, they are required by, and if they wouldn't, if you see a mess, yeah, so if you see a mess, and they don't report it to you, but you know they were just through there a day ago or two days ago, I would think those, I would call that crew in and say, hey, you guys didn't tell me nothing about this, so what's going on? I mean, people got to be held accountable, you know, because right away, when all this boo hooed, you know, we all got fired up, we all got these ordinances, we were going to buy this $250,000 truck, you know, to pick stuff up, and it was all, to my mind, it was crisis management, because it came down to the point, there was one guy not doing his job, and let all this stuff just build up, and now we're dealing with it, okay? So, what I'm looking at, and I know we can't, we're not going to put it in here, but the refuse guys got to help each other out to bring the city, to bring this stuff under control.
Well, if I may comment on that question, Councilman?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Is, one thing, you know, we mentioned about Portage, and I know their policy is that anytime any additional material is put out by a resident or otherwise, they have to contact the, their department beforehand, and advise them that they're putting out extra material, not just put it out there. So, I think, I'm that, I agree with your, your comment about the communication with the crews that are doing the regular routes and noticing the material that's out there, but in addition, it would, there should be some understanding of notification to the department directly from any resident or other entity that has trash, extra trash that they are going to be putting out, so that we don't have these out of control situations.
How many trucks a day do you have, Connie, that go out?
Five garbage trucks.
Pardon?
Five garbage trucks and one garage truck, six trucks total.
Okay, so there's six trucks that are out in the city?
Yeah.
Every day, basically?
Basically.
Yeah, so that's, you know, how many more sets of eyes looking at this stuff, and as soon as they see something, all they got to do is call Connie Adams, say, Connie, check this out, Connie, check that out, they don't even have to wait till the end of the day, they can get you over there right now and check it out, so.
I would say some of them do, but to get back what Paul was saying earlier about our council used to collect the money, this was before, I mean, we still did before COVID. We, we would see a pile, they would call us, I would go there, try to talk with people, and we had a release form, they would sign it, and the release form states that they had to put, if it's a big pile, someone might tell them it's required to put $250 to cost it down, and then they sign, so the city won't be liable for no damage. We'd go over there, pick it up, load it up on the truck, take it there, dump it, they had to wait and all that, if it's $300 and they gave $250, we billed them for the other 50, so that's 300 the city didn't recruit, that's how we was doing it. We got away from that. We got away from that.
Did it work?
Yeah, we we brought in some money, plus with the tickets, prior to writing tickets for violations.
Yeah.
We brought in some money, yeah.
Okay, let me, since you brought that up Connie, you know. Is that like stated anywhere in these ordinances because?
That what, that they could go on the, on people's.
That, the one, if I may, is that that seemed to have worked. And we weren't in the, in the red on this stuff. So I mean, I think that, here's what I'm.
No, I don't think, I don't think anything like that stated in this reference.
I don't think so. So, but what I'm, what I'm looking at also is that maybe if you institute a policy and it's written as such. As Connie described, and you have uh, some kind of approach with the owner. Whether it be the homeowner himself or a rental person saying, look. You can either clean it up yourself or we'll clean it up and we'll figure in the man hours and the tonnage or whatever comes up.
It's not in this one, but it, do you have a copy of that one, ninety eight dash one four four, removal of building debris? It's it's in that that.
Yes, yeah.
Ninety eight, it's not in this one, it's one nine, it's ninety eight.
Yeah.
One forty two, one forty four, not in this.
Well, then this one is, is gonna eliminate that one, or we're just making another one? I, that's all I'm getting at, is what works and what doesn't work, you know? And and to get the renters, the people who are renters and even the homeowners, you know, so they can say, hey, look, okay? We know you got a mess, here's what we can do and. You know, we're we're cleaning up an issue and we're, we're making, we're making money. Or we're coming out even, alright, we're not having to subsidize what's going on, that's all. And that's all, uh, you know, sometimes, uh, what's that terminology? Simple, simple, stupid, simple or something to that, to that, and I'm not saying anybody's stupid or simple. But you know, that's just analogy, is that maybe that, you know, through all this rigmarole. We can eliminate a lot of that unsightly waste and say, look. And even educate the planning department, because that's one of my problems, because I was told, oh, there's nothing we can do about it. And I was taught that by the building commissioner, and I don't think they're educated. And about, you know, enforcing, enforcing the code, so. I think, you know, we gotta look at what it costs you guys and is that. A fair assessment on what you guys came up with, cause I'm concerned about. Uh, the rate.
Ordinance, I, I would like to see that ninety eight, one forty four back in there, cause it's not in this part. It goes to one forty two to one forty three.
Okay.
And one forty four is removal of building.
Right, okay, I.
It is, it is in there now, but it's not in this.
Right, and it, and it should be listed, you know? So.
Yeah, that's what you're talking about, Connie, on the first page here?
No, it's on page three, cause I don't see it on the first page.
Alright. Looking at this ninety eight, one forty four.
No, he said one forty one.
This is on this, this is the other one, this is the uh, HVAC.
Yeah, but that's what I'm talking about, that's where we can recruit our money back.
Yeah, that's how you used to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this here should be included in this.
Yeah.
That's what you're talking about.
Yeah, right here, forty two, forty three, and should be right after that.
Yeah, see this here, Mike.
Right, yeah.
That's that ninety eight, one forty four.
That's where we can recruit the money.
Yeah, where you, you're allowed to go on their property, pick it up and then fill them later.
It also says that we can perform, we got a form that we made up that they have to sign and pay back.
Okay, well, then that's something we're gonna have to do to, we're gonna have to uh, incorporate.
Amend.
Yeah. Amend the ordinance.
Right.
Okay, alright, we'll get together, we'll do that.
Yeah, you got it.
Alright, good point. Good point. Alright. Thanks Connie, that's good, thanks Paul. That was good.
So you're saying we're keeping, you wanna make sure one forty four is still included in all this? And yeah.
I um. Incorporate it to uh, public. Now, you know. When we talked about that, um, you said, how do you guys, how do you envision handling a. Uh, problem with. People putting stuff out and they got too much stuff, you know, and they got. You know, a couple bags out there and they got a bunch of cardboard and they got a bunch of stuff. You know, what, what are we gonna do with something like that? Are we gonna, are we gonna notify these people in the water bill? Telling them the do's and don'ts or, I mean, like, you know, these people been doing it for. I got a guy making a pile down the street in the alley, alright? And some that looks like.
Well, that's what I was saying earlier, that we talked about that at the original workshop as far as communications out to the uh. To the public and notifying the public on how we're, and how this is gonna be ran after it's all put together.
Well, okay.
You got water bills, you got WFM, you got community focus, however. You know, the internet, the city website.
Social media.
There's all the different communities.
Well, you know, a lot of, but here's what I'll say, a lot of people complain about the city's website. And a lot of people don't listen to WFM and, and a lot of people, you're gonna put that much information. In a, a water bill, I was wondering, how much would it cost to send it out in a mass mailing to. All the, all the residents of the city in a, like, every other week? You got, how many collections uh, points do you have? I mean, we gotta notify them some way, you gotta tell them, turn in your toders buddy. Turn, turn in your toders that you had for fifteen years. That's gonna go over real big.
Nobody's turning in any toders.
Well, you just said you can't have more than uh, one or two, you haven't, you haven't just.
We're just talking about it, we're not telling anybody anything yet, that's why we're having the workshop to talk about it.
Well, I.
Alright, well, so for the public, we used to do like all what y'all saying to the. To the WFM and you know, stuff like that, but then we also used to go, code enforcement, we used to go to the neighborhood seminars, that faded out. And I think we did good that we visited there, whoever there, we spread the word, like I told them who I am. What my job is, what I'm looking for, normally have some boards with me to show them what, what's a violation. That stuff faded out, but we used to go to all the neighborhoods, Memorial Park.
That's a good idea.
Over here at the West Side.
Now, I, I'm just saying, you know, if we wanna change the rules, we gotta.
We used to have that TV show, uh, Alco.
Yeah.
We used to go on that, and I mean, we, we had public communication there.
Right.
And all that stuff faded out.
Okay, well, hey, that's something, I'll sit down and talk with you and, you know, this ordinance. You know, you, I and Mike can sit down and talk about this ordinance and how we gotta amend it and add stuff to it. Yeah, you know, move this thing forward.
If you uh, wanted to put a mass mailing out, to put it in the hands of every resident of the city. You could do that for about twenty three thousand dollars, using every door direct mail. It would hit every mailing address in Michigan City. Best way to get it out, you're gonna do it.
That's an idea. That's an idea. Okay, moving on with this uh. Rubbish ordinance, and it just, I just have a couple uh, couple more questions on this one. Uh, let's see, it says here, they're talking about every vehicle used for carrying garbage. Or swells shall be steam cleaned as often as may, may be necessary to prevent. Persistent odors or even shall be so cleaned once per week. So how many times a week do we wash our garbage trucks? You got any idea?
Rarely.
Pardon?
Rarely, we have, we rarely have time for it.
Okay, so you guys don't wash your trucks every week?
No, doesn't say rarely, if you don't answer.
Okay.
Maybe that should be modified as needed.
Or as needed?
Yeah.
I would think, once this, once it gets starting to stink, right? These guys are gonna hang on the back of.
The back of it, the box, they, they are required, that gets done once a week or twice, the box. Where the, where the garbage actually goes, you have to get in there and clean it out because the cylinders and all the. So that does get done, I thought you were talking about washing the.
Yeah, inside of the whole box?
Yeah.
Yeah, inside of the whole truck.
That gets done, yeah.
Okay.
The outside, far as washing them.
Alright.
Yeah, cause when you pack that garbage up, I mean, it's got creases, so some garbage gonna get through, so. Most of the time they try to do it at the landfill if it's not bagged up, if not, when they get back, they get a toter, get inside the box, scrape it, shuttle it out.
Yeah, okay. I was just curious, I saw that, you know, cause we're talking not only about our garbage trucks, but about any. Uh, contractor that comes to town, yeah, their garbage trucks, I mean. I don't know how they expect to police that, but.
Yeah.
They're not, they're not, so anyway, question about that. Uh, let's see, and then, let's see. Required, this is under section ninety eight, one ninety one, ninety eight, one ninety one. And what is, what it says here. Uh, see, no person shall engage in a business of private refuse, collection or shall use streets, alleys or public places. For the transportation or shall be permitted to remove or dispose. Swell, awful table, refuse usually known as garbage, blah, 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 or any other matter. Without first having obtained a permit to do so. And then it says, however, no permit shall be required of any person or renewal of manure, blah, blah, blah. But it doesn't say. How often they have to get the permit renewed or who gives them a permit, I don't know. Do we have any idea what, what all that means? I mean, right now, do the refuse, refuse companies that come to town, do they all have city permits?
I don't know who checks that.
Yeah, I mean, does Waste Management come here and get a permit, Republic come here and get a permit?
Like, yeah, Lake Shore, I don't know how they go about that, but Lake Shore come through too.
Can I make a uh, additional comment to uh, private carriers? That I do know in the code, it says that. They call me. We uh, you cannot violate the noise ordinance, which is you cannot uh. Start any like construction work before seven o'clock in the morning and. You, you cannot use power equipment before seven o'clock in the morning.
Where's that at?
It's, it's in the code, it's in the code, not in here.
Oh, okay, I was.
And that, um. I get up for work and I leave for work fairly early in the morning and uh, I'm trying to find a picture. That, that. And for me, I think it's, it's not fair to the residents of the neighborhood that they're out. And this is most, this is mostly on a recycled day in my neighborhood at five thirty in the morning, co- collecting. Uh, uh, the recycled containers. So, I think that we need to address that and address something to go to all the private collectors. Since we're even looking at all this uh, stuff in, in the ordinance. I'm just bringing that up as a. Something for the board in uh. I don't know if we, we can, the city council itself can regulate that or pass ordinance, but I think we could. And I don't think it's, for me, you know, I don't, I don't think that. I think like five thirty in the morning's kind of early to collect it, you know? Junk in the morning, even if, if it goes even to that far, even uh, going out. Some of these people unloading uh, semis. In my neighborhood have been out there sitting all night running their motors, you know, with a, with a. I don't, I know that, that, that doesn't pertain to you guys, but I'm, I'm bringing it up because it needs to be addressed. And that, that falls in the, those private carriers. Um, have you ever estimated how much money we're saving on these uh, CNG trucks? On, in the long term on, on your. Productivity for the department, cause I know it was, it was a.
Well, if I could, Paul, let's just, let's finish this uh. Ordinance up, okay, we can save that for uh. Those are miscellaneous questions, but uh, those are, those are the last concerns I have for that refuse rubbish ordinance. Anybody else got any concerns about the rubbish ordinance?
No, I think the big one is the county brought up about.
That one forty four, yeah.
Ninety eight, one forty four.
Yeah, that ninety eight, one forty four?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Cause you got one forty three, one forty seven.
Thank you Connie.
I, I got one question, Paul, concerning that ninety eight. The section ninety eight, one four four, is that. Do we have any language that if we, if it's considered a public nuisance? That you can go on, onto the property and uh. Get, get uh, remove the garbage in that dome, cause I know.
Can I see that, what you called?
Yeah.
I mean, I know.
What do you want, you want this one?
One forty four.
That one forty four thing?
It says that, that it talks about the legal owner executing an affidavit. That he certainly owns the property, talks all this legal owner deposits, you know?
Uh, sorry, you can keep that.
I mean, I got it in back at the shop, I just didn't ask for it.
Okay.
And.
Uh, the park four, the legal owner deposit of refuse deposit.
You know?
Provide the fossil reimbursement. Where it says about the. Financial arrangement.
Yeah, but I, I, I'm thinking about something like uh. Um, say you gotta do an emergency cleanup job on a, a rental property that somebody threw all the shit out the alley, that happens a lot.
Or it's kinda on their property, on C, it says the sanitation di- district, still calls to be prepared by any forms, all forms be necessary. To intent to, to get this stuff, so we got a form already by the attorney. That gives us the right to go on their property, once they sign that, we can.
I, I understand that, but I'm talking about claiming that it. Nothing, cause it's not in here causing a public nuisance, okay? And you know, if somebody cleans out a god darn house, you know? Somebody cleans out a dang house, that we had somebody clean out a house on Buffalo Street.
Well, that goes.
And it was just all, it was just all in the yard.
Well, that goes back to one forty, one forty two, when it causes offense to uh. Offense to the neighbors and all that on one forty two.
Okay. So you can't take action like that and then bill it, bill that individual. Alright, well, I, I just wanna know what's there and, you know, I made a note of that and you'll dig it out.
For any garbage accumulated from any whatsoever to maintain and clean for odor and free conditions. For any garbage accumulating from any whatsoever to maintain and clean for odor and free conditions. Right there in, uh, section ninety-eight, one four-two, section eight.
Section what?
Eight.
Eight.
Ninety-eight, one four-two, eight.
And then B though, it talks about apartment complexes, did you see that?
Which one?
That, one ninety-eight, B starts talking about. The city will, in some cases where numerous carts are needed, such as apartment complexes. The city may discretion provide a dumpster.
And we, the city may provide, well. And, uh.
Which sentence in here? Standards?
Right here, the requirements.
Right here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
For when it accumulates smell and be offensive to others.
Every person owning or leasing a residence or place of business in the city.
Well, like, on a complex. Out there at, uh. Willa Neese. They got dope, uh, some dumpsters, but the city pays for that, I don't know if y'all know that sanitation pays for that. We used to pick that up by hand. Instead of having. A hundred, a hundred or so toters out there. Got dumpsters out there, that the city pays. Well, they need couple, couple complexes. I guess because they buy her or something. Might. The, the dumpsters we pay for.
Right, I honestly don't know, I need to check with, uh, Scott. Talking about that, we were talking, discussing about the. Extra materials that we get charged for on occasion if they're not placed in the dumpster.
For the dumpsters that we pay for out there, Willa Neese.
Right.
All those. Tall timbers.
Those are our dumpsters?
No.
They, they Waste Management, but, uh.
We pay for it.
We pay for it.
The complex should be charged for those dumpsters. We gotta pay Waste Management, Republic. We should pay them, and then the other complex should pay us for the market.
So.
If it's happening, I don't know, but it should be.
Y'all gotta excuse me, I need to bathroom again. They got me on this medicine and I'll just go, go.
Well, I guess that's another.
Well, hey, Paul, hey, going back to your original question about. People dumping stuff in the alleys and just leaving it there, and then Connie saying that. Under this ninety-eight, one forty-two, A. It shall be the duty of every person owning, owning. Or leasing a residence or place of business in a city where garbage accumulates from anything whatsoever. To maintain in a clean and order free condition and a cart provided by the city. But it doesn't, I think, wasn't your question that, you know, does the city have the right to pick up all this other? Garbage, right, and backcharge these people? Isn't that where you're getting at?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it doesn't say that in here. It doesn't specify that in here. It just says you're supposed to keep it clean. It doesn't say that you could be backcharged for having the excessive garbage cleaned up. And I think it needs to be in here.
Well, we, we, you know, that's what we need to do, we need to, you know. Keep massaging this thing and get it as close to accomplishing the goal as we can, and that's. Tell them where we're gonna get there, is doing what we're doing.
But at the end of C, it says, kind of like, if it doesn't fit in the cart, they're supposed to call refuse to, for, for a special pickup. And that's what they're supposed to do, it's not, it doesn't take anything off, they're gonna charge people, but they're supposed to put, and. Refuse department must be promptly contacted for special pickup at the normal collection location of all large items that cannot fit within the cart.
Yeah, and then, and by reading that section, it, that. It's not expanded to say you need to, you know, not to put it out and let it sit there, and. Now, that's another problem we had, is that stuff sitting on the right of way for weeks on end because the list wasn't. Accurate and kept, kept up. So. We had that discussion before, that the list. Needs to be kept accurate and up to date, and that those people who want to pick up something big. You know, they need to know, you don't call us the day you put it out. We'll give you a pickup date. And that's what we talked about at some point before. And right, it doesn't say they're gonna charge you for anything else, so that's all gotta be rectified. When this is all figured out, these things all gotta be incorporated in there and so everybody knows where they're at.
Hey Connie, so I can just, you correct me if I'm wrong, because this is all.
Making merry, Lynn.
Alright, is, uh, because you were talking about that ninety-eight, one forty-two. A, section eight. And, because Paul, I think the, the original question was, or concern was. Is that if the refuse truck goes on the alley, and it got this great abundance of refuse sitting there, you know, you got your one toter. But you got enough garbage there to fill up five toters. So is that where we can come and charge these people? You know, give them a ticket and charge them extra, because you had to pick up all this other? Refugees, or what do you guys?
Normally if it's. If it's houndable, far as packing by hand. We normally could, you know, if they, when they get done with the route, or if we got an extra truck, they come and pack it up by hand. Hand pack stuff. That we really don't charge, because we don't have to wait for it or nothing.
Yeah.
It's when we go out with that payload. But we had to grab stuff and load up in a dumpster. That's normally, is normally a hundred dollar metal.
Yeah, I know, because you can weigh it and do all that kind of stuff with it, alright.
And normally even getting like that, like last week, I wrote like about. Five or six tickets. Because it's going down the alleys. Somebody that moved out or vacated or gotten out, I pulled up, they, they haven't called or nothing. But I pull up and it's a big pile there.
Well, I'll tell you what. You should get a bonus for that. Take a picture, because you set an all-time, uh, record there for the last two years, because the other guy didn't write any violations, so. There you go. Good job. Good job.
No, but what we do with that. Take a picture of it, so we got documented it was there. I, I locate that one, because most of the time the house is empty. And then they work when we not around. So I get the information, write the ticket, mail it to them. When we get chance, we come and pick it up anyway, because we don't want it still sitting out there.
Right, right, right.
We document it, what truck it went on. Like, we got one that went on nineteen at eighteen. Then it comes from this address, so when it go to the landfill, when the ticket come back to the secretary. She get that ticket, it's got the weight of it, how much it costs. We bill them for that too. That's what we're doing right now. So we're getting a fine, and we're getting what it costs us to dump it. You know, not like they ain't getting. Is the cost of labor, fuel, mileage.
Yeah, when you guys do that, does that usually get to people's attention? And they don't continue on abusing it, or do some people don't really care?
Right now, they were coming down paying, haven't they?
Yeah, somebody came, well, and it's control office, somebody came down to pay. I, I just only heard one couple come down. I think they were the tenants, but they, they came to pay. And they did, and they're like, yeah, that was our dress. I'm not sure who they were.
Alright. So. Uh, I think those are the only. Questions I have as far as the refuse. Uh. Ordinance. So I'm just gonna go over.
Hey, of course, once we get this finalized, yeah, we'll have a public, once y'all get this all finalized, which way you gonna go? Yeah, we'll have a public hearing and all that.
Oh, yeah.
Just say you can voice that pain or know what's going on.
Yeah, these ordinances are tabled right now. Okay, so they're not, we're gonna keep working on them till they get where we need to have them at. And then once they get. Taken care of, then we'll bring them off the table and. It's, uh, they're on second reading, so you'll have two more readings for people to comment on them and see what they think about them.
Because you know, for me being out there enforcing, I would like you say, I would like. The residents to get knowledge or know what's going on, so when I approach them, it won't be. Where the heck this come from, or why is this?
Yeah, no, I, I understand.
I get enough, I get enough yet, Paul, ready.
And that's all part of the communications, like Paul was saying, I was saying. You know, however, we're gonna get this thing out there. We will have to get it out there and do a good, do a good job of it.
And if I can say, I would still like to try to be all fair with these prices. With the resident, because you know, I did this job four years ago for a while. And I did, I think I did a pretty good job, and I communicated, but I was getting mostly compliance, I mean, I got. Some fines and all that people pay, but I like compliance more than money. A clean city more than money. Right?
I got, I got you.
I agree.
I, I totally agree.
I mean, they can pay something, then we give back, but if we stick it to a two hour.
Oh, no, we'll be finding it, we'll be finding it. Right, Hitchcock Road, that's a famous road, man. You know? Heck, yeah.
That's my concern.
You know where Hitchcock is?
I do.
Yeah, right next to that, um.
Creek. Right next to the creek too, so that could be double fine.
Kind of reminds me of Tobacco Road.
Oh, wait a minute, oh, yeah, now, what's that lane that goes, uh, behind, uh. Friendship Gardens?
Yeah.
That, that are the favorite spot.
They did get us.
I remember a whole pile being, uh, I mean, unbelievable. So people who. There? I just want, I just want. You know, Connie, like you said, people to comply, and. I don't think at the end of the day that, uh, the fees will be exorbitant. Probably, I don't know, what is a fee right now for, uh? Was it a five, five cubic yard or ten? Ten, what is?
It's a minimum of five, five?
No, I'm talking about like for a commercial, uh, ten yard.
Seven hundred and eighty dollars or so.
Yeah, they need up there.
Seven hundred and eighty bucks?
Yeah.
Ten or twenty, like.
Uh. Ten, I believe, or four. There was a note in there.
No, it's not, one ninety-four.
Yeah, that's like a six yard. About four hundred, I think, I think around seven hundred for ten yards of air.
So. Unless, uh, I, I don't wanna go into the fees and all that yet, let's, I wanna go to the next ordinance. Let's go to the next ordinance. That's the one with the, uh.
That's correct.
Creating section twenty-two seventy and section fifty-one fifty-one. Code, uh, a waste disposal plan for the applications. For the, uh, building permits. For electrical, HVAC, and/or plumbing permits. Everybody got a copy of one?
Yeah, I have one more, I gave mine to her there.
Oh, no, no, no. That's rather trash. Everybody got one? Connie, you got one?
No, I don't see one, I have one.
Alright, Lynn, you got one?
Yeah, why don't you get it? There you go.
Yep.
What are you at?
Pardon?
What are you at?
Twenty-two seventy.
This here. We haven't got any, we haven't, I haven't even talked about it yet, I just read the, uh.
Okay.
The title of. And if anybody's, uh. You know, got any comments to it. I know I looked it over and. I think I had a, not a lot of comments, I think it's something good that's, uh. Needed, because I, as I travel through the city. And, and as I travel through Long Beach. I see more and more of these, uh. Construction boxes. That people are putting everything in those boxes, there's no more piles piled up in front of buildings where people are doing, uh. Work, and, yeah, I think it's, uh, a long time coming. That we needed something like this, and I think that'll take care of a lot of this. Debris laying alongside the streets when people are doing construction work at their houses.
Yeah, sure, I, if I may, uh.
Yeah.
I work with Attorney LaPage on this. Consequent to, again, checking with some of the neighboring communities. And this is something that was instituted, uh, with great success. Uh, to at least eliminate that so significant, could be a significant portion of. Uh, material that's put out. And making it a prerequisite to issuing a building permit. Or, uh, excuse me. Uh, a, a permit for construction or whatever, you know, remodeling or. Any of that type of work that they have to submit. Uh, disposal plan, a plan for, um. A plan for disposing of, uh, waste materials from that project.
Okay, and then, I think one, one question I had is, uh. Uh, see. It's on the second page, it's the second whereas. And it's whereas at all times persons performing building, electrical, HVAC, plumbing work. To be responsible for securing their own dumpsters and providing their own needs and properly and legally disposed. Of such solid waste and construction debris. So, take for example, say a guy's doing a plumbing job, or doing a remodeling job. And he's got pipes that he's taken out of the house, and. You know, instead of. Instead of him throwing those pipes in the dumpster. You know, put them off to the side, and maybe he would say, you know, hey, city, you guys can take them pipes. You know, would we recycle? You know, and try to get money for that kinda, you know, for piping? I mean, there's gotta be some money, some scrap money involved in that. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, but we don't have, uh. Employees over the time and all that to separate rates to. To, you know, actually just go out and get pipes and put them in a certain location and all that, I mean.
No, I wouldn't say, it'd have to be at the job site. Okay, so say the guy takes the plumbing out of the bathroom or whatever, and he makes a little pile, he puts a pile of pipes here. He don't put it in the box. He just leaves it off to the side. Now, if the city wants to take it, they can take it, if they don't want it, then he can throw it in the box, that's all, I'm just looking at a way to.
You're talking about a resident working on their own property.
Pardon?
You're, you're referring to a resident doing his own or her own work on the property? As opposed to having a contractor doing it, is that, is that what you mean?
No, even a contractor, you know, if the contractor's doing it, you know, you don't wanna throw it in the box. But say, you know what? Just put it, put it off to the side, and, you know, the city will take, take it.
Um, like a residence where like totes, when we go get piled. We do, there's stuff like that there, we do take the pipes over like refrigerators and dryers and all that. We pick those up separately, and we take them out to Hitchcock. We got a, a dump truck out there, we smash it up, load it up. Once it get loaded, we do take that to the recycle and get cash for it, and it comes back to the sanitation.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was thinking, you know, same thing with piping.
We kinda do that now, I mean.
Yeah, but I mean, that would have to be discussed when these guys give their, get their permits. Like the inspection department could tell them, hey, if you, if you don't wanna get rid of the pipe. And you wanna recycle it, we'll recycle it for you, just put it off to the side.
And call us, that's what most people do with refrigerators. They call, they call and it'd be on our list. Refrigerator has such, such address, stove, this and that, and we go get that, normally in a pickup trucks, take it out to Hitchcock.
So it's okay to see if you can make a few neck holes, that's all.
We normally get two, three hundred dollars a load.
Yeah, something to think about, something to think about, okay? Alright, so I, I talked about that, and the other thing I have with this, uh, ordinance is I think the, uh. The violation fees are too much. Uh, for the first violation, they got not less than five hundred, not more than twenty-five hundred. I think that's, uh, too steep.
Forty-five.
Bring that down a little bit, make it, you know, somebody may make, make, somebody might make a honest mistake. And I don't think they should be penalized. That exorbitant of an amount, and same thing for the, uh. Second, who, who'd be violating?
Who's gonna, this is gonna be enforced by mainly the planning department, right?
Right.
I think it's way too steep because, uh, I think that. Uh. In, in their, in their judgment that they're, uh.
Now, this is on building degree or contractor sites, what is?
What, what, what do you think? This is on contractors, you know, sites, and people, if I come in to do a, a. At my house, if I wanted redo a bathroom. I go get a permit, they're gonna ask Don Perulinski, how you getting rid of this stuff? And I'm gonna tell them, I'm gonna get a three yard roll, a three yard box out here. So everything's gotta go in that three yard box. Now, if they. If I decide unknowingly, well, even knowingly, take this stuff and put it somewhere else. And they find out about it, I guess, then they can fine me for it.
So is this section fifty dash one fifty-one?
Yeah, first violation.
Yeah, so you give the inspection department your disposal plan but when they come out there and they find out you didn't use that disposal plan, then they can find them. Okay? Yeah.
Well.
So anyway, Paul, you asked me a question. We, we, what, well, I thought maybe for the first violation, two hundred and fifty bucks and not more than a thousand dollars.
Well.
And they still have to remove it.
There, there's something, yeah, there's something in the code that is like a, uh, a blanket, uh, uh, enforcement, uh, fine system that's in the code right now. So I'd have to, let, let's research that and.
But they got that one part up there, you can be fined up to twenty-five hundred dollars, that's in there now.
Right, after so many, up to, you, like, you get.
It doesn't state.
Uh, you get, see, this doesn't specifically say like, uh, you get, uh, your first violation and subsequent every other violation, it, it, you know, adds on to it. That's what it says like in the, what chapter in the, in the code, but I think it's too high too and I think that it should be, uh, written a little bit differently on, uh, you know, maybe so many days, uh, given to them under, under the first one, you know, like the section talks about. On so many days you have to rectify your, uh, uh, prob, your problem.
Yeah, I, I think the inspection department will do that. I don't wanna get into nailing down, yeah, I could talk to the inspection department and see what they have to say, but I don't, I don't wanna nail down, hey, you gotta get this thing cleared out for two days or you gotta get it cleared out.
The whole purpose though is us not sitting up?
I don't know what, I don't know what circumstances are for people.
You wanna find them and then it's like find them and you guys come and pick it up and then we find them. I mean, you wanna get it out of there, right?
Right.
So, so if they didn't follow what they said for their building permit, then we give them a fine and you guys haul it away.
I would like it before they start, if we can put in there before they start work, then a dumpster or something be on site before they even start work or granted a permit.
Oh, that's true.
Be, be more looking at the scope of work that is determined at what size dumpster should be placed.
Work they don't do, they gonna need a four to ten yard.
Of work.
Put, have that in sight.
Then you won't even see.
Yeah, dumpster will be there.
On site before granted a permit.
Right, and it'll be, it'll be agreed to upon placement of, uh, of the, I don't care if it's in the street, the driveway or the backyard, but it.
On site.
And then it's contained while the work is being done, it's not unsightly there, the dumpster's already there. Yeah.
Man, one dumpster put on Washington Street right off Eleventh Street and it, and, and that second house there and they had a right of way, they could've put it on the right of way and whatever, but, you know, I'm looking at it going, they got a cone there, but then the cone didn't.
I thought there's some kind of reflector or something night.
Yeah, but they did, but you couldn't see it, seriously, at, at night. It was a ill place, so I think that, yes, Don, the inspection department does in circum circumstances do a okay job and in some other instances, they don't. And at the council meeting, I will talk about that because I reported something to them last week and they, or a few weeks ago and they didn't take action.
Okay.
And, uh, you said, you were saying give them.
We're not gonna air that now.
You, you were saying give them a couple of days, uh, to clean it up? The second part says each day violation exists, it shall be deemed a separate offense. So they not giving them a couple of days, they want you to get it up now 'cause if they come back in another day, they can.
They're gonna get you again.
Yeah, they get you again.
Yeah.
That's what that states.
Yeah, yeah, they can find you each consecutive day that this thing isn't cleaned up. So you could wind up, uh, uh, let's see. Yeah, it says each day that a violation exists shall be deemed a separate offense. So they can just keep tagging it on, but. I'm not gonna, that's up to them, that ain't no.
Wait a minute, it's up to us, we're, we're amending this thing, but see, what, now let, let me say this. If that, if they get a, no, uh, issue a, a citation on, on Friday, so then they're gonna, uh, be hit on Saturday and Sunday for violations and they can't get a dumpster delivered maybe till Tuesday. See, I go back to the point like what Connie and Mary Lynn were saying about having this thing placed and giving them the inspection department the responsibility to get it done, not leaving it open there because I had, and, and, you know, sometimes you gotta call it the way you see it. And I had a very clear violation and they did not act on it. And it, and it wasn't about being worried about having a red tag or something like that. It was clearly a violation of the code on putting stuff on easements and they did not act on it. So the thing is, when you want somebody to do something, you better have it specifically in black and white or you leave it open for interpretation.
And don't leave the deed.
And that's a fact. Going to any judge in my hearing. And that's my stand on it, that we need to expand that. And I believe that, and I do believe that we need to have that language in there because I talked to them about a thing on Lafayette Street.
So what, what language are you saying needs to be put in there?
Now, imagine how you're doing, you're so quiet.
What language are you talking about being put in there?
Well, I'll have to, you know, like all things, I'll have to write something up and, uh, under their suggestion because see what bothers me? Do you see the inspection department here? Do you see anybody from the inspection department here, Don? Do ya? I don't, they must not give a shit. Okay? End of my story with that. Okay? And.
Well.
And I, I'm gonna excuse myself.
I, I, I will, I will talk, I will talk to the, uh, inspection department. I'll tell them that they're going to have to, uh, come up with more specifics.
Uh, you know what?
More specifics.
Uh, I, it's in my responsibility, I will call Amber tomorrow.
Okay.
And ask her, cause they did not have language in there, uh, dealing with specifically rental property and, and I spoke to her about that. Thank you, thank you, Mary Lynn.
Okay.
And, and if you have any other ideas, let me know. Connie, you do a good job, alright, and I, I brought that up because the inspection department is not doing their job. They're trying to push it off on everybody.
Alright, the crowd's getting smaller and smaller.
I'm your widget.
Huh?
Still your widget.
Alright. Okay, get that. And. Okay, we're gonna take, Paul, we're gonna take care of that. Alright, hey, you guys have any more comments about this, uh, construction debris with the inspection department? Any more comments on that?
I just hate when, I just hate when it fall back on us on refuse. A lot of that construction debris.
That's why I think this will take care of that.
This will take care of this, Connie.
If they, if they get a dumpster before they do the work, or not to say, or before they get a permit, because if they give them a permit to start work and say they can't get a dumpster till next week, where is that stuff gonna go into then?
Well, yeah, but they gotta give them, that's the plan, they gotta give the inspection department. When you gonna get your dumpster? And if they say it's not gonna be there until next week, then they're not gonna let them, the way I understand it.
Right.
Maybe it's gotta be worded per se.
You permit.
You can't do anything until you get that.
Has to be on site.
Dumpster's gotta be on site.
Dumpster's usually pretty readily available, I have double list.
Sure.
That's a good point.
Like back order.
And dumpster on site.
Well, that would, that would, and that, and that, really the fact that would help a lot.
Yeah, then it just, everything stays more, I mean, if they're just dumping right in the dumpster, then the problem's solved. As long as you know where that dumpster is.
Alright, dumpster on site. Yeah, and this is gonna help, Connie, with all these construction jobs where all this stuff is laying up, was laying all over town.
Right.
Now, when you, when you start getting these boxes, it's not gonna be happening.
Now, like you said, we can find them when they don't go with that or they don't do that, 'cause, you know, you got some landlords, I can't, I ain't mentioning putting nobody's name out there, but I run into them that will do their own work and gut the house out, broken drywall and everything and pile it up in the alley on, and he's done for us.
Yeah, but that's not gonna happen anymore. Cause it, well, if they legally come in and get a permit like they're supposed to and whether they do get a permit, whether they issue them a permit, okay, they'll have to have a plan to get rid of it. Now, if they're, if they're a midnight rider, fly-by-night guy that's doing his own work, hopefully he'll get caught and then if he does get caught, then he'll start paying these fines.
Cause you know, normally, I'm the one that calls the planning inspection. When I'm going up down these alleys in neighborhoods and I see building debris, I'll call Christie, you know, Sewer or anyone of them say, hey, do they got a permit, they look up? They'll say no, so then they, they'll write it down to come out through red tagging. So they debris, even when they don't have a permit to do the work they're doing it, that tells on them, because when I see that, our first thing I do, I check with them.
Yeah, well, that's the thing to do.
And then they come out red tagging, but.
There you go.
Stuff is on the ground already.
Well, then they would be, they would be fined, I believe.
Should be fined for not getting a permit and for stuffing man on the.
Right, and you know what, hopefully eventually the word is gonna get out, people start getting fined if they don't obey what the laws and it'll slow all this stuff down, there are basically, there are many still, you know, things are still gonna happen here and there, but it won't be to the extent that's, it has happened. Okay.
And just to let you know, if I may, just clarify that we are developing right now, actually, it's, it's in, it's in use uh, system with tablets, uh.
Yeah.
If you're aware, so that also we're working with code enforcement so that we'll have communication, uh, that will be distributed to not only our staff, but also code enforcement so that we know.
Do they have those tablets yet, Mike?
Yes.
We do, but I, I think, uh, code enforcement, they still in the works. But we, we at the phase now, we, we using them out there now. Like the call list we get is actually on that tablet. So when I go out, I go in and inspect them, take a picture of them, get that, you know, the address and all that is in there. So I tap and open it up when I get there, take a picture of what's there, make notes, gap where I can put it on a driver's truck, what driver's route can come and get it or what loader can come and get it and if there's gonna be a fee, you do all of that and you send it to that and then when the actual person come and get it, they got a tablet. They, they take a picture of the stuff and once they remove it and get it done, they take a picture of it's done and they send it in to complete. So that mean it'll be completed and it shows, you know, we got documentation that we did get it that day and everything else, you know, cause some people.
Yeah, that means it work a lot better?
It's in the, it's in the early stages, but I think it's gonna prove to be a benefit to us and make us more efficient.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially once we get caught, cause this is a hundred and fifty-five addresses on there right now.
Right.
And it's just one of me.
All that stuff.
It, it just one of me right now, so.
Yeah, how was you doing before, get a sheet of paper and?
I would have a couple, I would have like two, three or four sheets of paper with a list on it. And when I see it like that, I know the city, I can label like Alpham ones, three, six and so. That mean if I'm on this side of town, all the ones is there. That part on that, on that, uh, tablet is not done yet, it's got a routing thing on it. That's the next phase they gonna do, so it'll route it to each address so you don't be bouncing around.
Okay. Okay.
I think once they get all the nicks and glicks out.
It's gonna be good.
And we get caught up, we're made to stay up on it.
How far behind are we right now?
About a hundred and fifty-five, as Connie said.
It's a hundred and fifty-five on there, but some of them done. Cause we been getting them while he was working on that. Cause so now when I go to, the address is on there, if it's, if it's not there no more, you put complete, not there, take a picture of it and then it come off the list. It was threesome.
And I mean, is this the biggest list that's ever done?
Yeah, it was bigger earlier, summer, when we were.
Yeah, but it's cause.
It's coming down.
Yeah.
Yes, it is coming down and also the volume, uh, and number of these type, um, uh, city, uh, lists, uh, tends to decrease as the weather cools off.
Oh, yeah, hopefully by the, before the first of the year would be, have a fresh start, hopefully.
Yeah? Alright, fantastic.
That's what I'm hoping for.
Yes.
Alright, so, so the next part of this is this bulk refuse disposal and collection and, you know, I'm not gonna sit here and decide whether this is good or bad just by myself, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Yeah, and I know that you supplied the information, Mike. Uh, I've looked it over.
It's just for consideration of work drivers.
Right, I mean, to me.
Somewhere.
To me, the console and, you know, whatever reason people aren't here tonight to look at it, there's gonna be another workshop to talk about this thing. And we're gonna talk about this at the same time and, you know, I'll hold, I'll hold my comments and, uh, we'll go from there.
They do got a copy of this to go through now before the next workshop, don't they?
For, pardon?
Do they have a copy of this already?
Yeah.
Okay, well, hopefully they'll go through and have some opinions.
Well, I know, you gave me a copy at the last council meeting.
Yes.
Okay. I didn't get a chance, no, so this will be next Tuesday night? They're all gonna get a copy of this? Same packet, okay? So they can look at it, then I'll call another workshop. Then, and I, I don't know if, if Connie needs to be here for this, does he, for the cost analysis? It's up to you guys, whoever, whoever needs to come. But, yeah, so, well, right now, Mike, just to talk about this, so what do we, what are we charging right now? Is there, these aren't, is this the figures you're charging right now for people?
No, that's, those are proposed right now.
This is all brand new?
Yes.
Okay. So what do we charging now?
Right now, when I see the pile, it's, it's, I mean, three or four pieces of furniture, we don't charge, we just pick up.
Okay.
If it's, if it's a pile, it's, you know, we got to actually use equipment.
Yeah.
We, it's a hundred minimum. They had to go down and put a hundred dollar deposit down and sign a form that they agree to pay. We pick it up, we load the truck, we take it there and get it ready and dump and when the TV come back, they built, we had the address and all that and they built them for the rest, so. We get, we, we get it at thirty-five dollars per ton. Say if they had four ton or something like that, that's gonna go over a hundred dollars. So the remaining, the remaining, they build them for. But they already done put down at least a hundred deposit.
That's spelled out in that one forty-four, is that already spelled out somewhere in this ordinance?
That, that form?
Yeah, is it in, is it in?
It's on one forty-four where we can come up with the form.
Okay, yeah.
The legal form and all that, because also on that form, it states that the city is not liable for any damage done on your property.
Oh, we pick it up.
You know, but when we use that payload, the weight of that and wherever you have that, you giving us the, you giving us the authority to come there. And if we ride on your property a little bit and get whatever it is, if my tire make tracks, we're not responsible for that and we crack your driveway, cause that's where you get it at, you sign that paper, the city is not liable.
Okay, so when you guys go there, Connie, you got the form and they sign it?
Oh, no, they sign it before we go.
Oh, okay.
They put the deposit out.
Oh, okay.
Once I see the pile, I contact with people, say, hey, go down there and do this and that and they go down there and sign it.
So who's got the form, where do they, where do they go down?
Sanitation.
Yeah.
Well, they go down a hundred and eighty St. Street.
Eleven hundred and eighty St. Street. Okay, I tell you, normally I would, I call her and give her a heads up, hey, such and such from addresses, when they wait out there to sign that, let me know what they do, so.
Yes.
And we get chance, like if we out and working with that equipment and she calling saying they just paid and signed, we can get it up right there in there. Which a lot of them do. We've been doing that lately since I've been back. Getting a lot of people to stay inside, we just have one check box on it, so...
We got garbage, your check spots, they're in bad shape, man. They can't, they can't hang, they can't manage.
Yeah, correct, correct, correct.
All right, so, so right now, so if somebody has a mattress laying out there, you don't charge them anything?
Not right now.
All right, so...
And if it's not bad, we don't, we just pack it up in the truck, but...
So if I got a hot water heater out there, you don't charge them anything?
No, we pick that up, we take, where we...
Yeah, scrap it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so every, so everything that's on these lists that Mike put together, does it all be income, cover the cost of doing the business of picking garbage up?
Extra, so right, basically.
Yeah, we're just taught, yeah, it all stays in the refuse account.
Pardon?
Yeah, all, all the money's, even, even the deposits and the, and the bills and the money's coming out, I mean, that all stays in the refuse account.
Yeah, but I'm saying all the money that's on these, on this list now, is all gonna be money coming in instead of us not making any money at all.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Now, for twice a year, we do special pickups.
We gonna do it twice a year?
Well, that's what this says, spring.
I know, I, I wanna touch on that, we don't do a spring and fall, Connor.
Well, that's what we were talking about, is incorporating one additional pickup in the fall, but also...
Make them help ease this, so people can get, but buy one as two free days.
Now, that was, well, you were, you were away recuperating, and that, uh, it was kind of...
I'd like to see how this is gonna work out.
Well, there was a conversation about reducing the time span in the spring.
I heard that, and that's, I'd like to see that, because we run six weeks, and the reason why we do is because the first round, people really don't have that much out, so we do do three weeks, we had to start it later, and it's, it's still, I, you can do it and try it, but I don't, I don't think it's gonna be too much success.
Okay, well, open the, you know...
Because for one, people's vacation, and it's kind of around spring break time that we start that. We start the last week of March, we go all the way through April, and the last, and the first week of May, that's six weeks. We go through the city walks, and it really is how it gotta be like that first round, same around, it gets heavy. So if we only do three weeks, it's gonna be... If we do three weeks in the spring and three weeks in the fall, I don't know. We all, I'm always willing to try it, but...
Right, well, it's, it's in the discussion stage right now, but the idea was that if we had an additional pickup, that that would hopefully address some of the extra, uh, waste that, that people need to put out. Or, or we can possibly consider, um, a free pickup somewhere during the course of the year for, for, um...
Yeah.
For a resident.
Yeah, a one free pickup a year?
Yeah, in addition to the spring.
Yeah, to the spring and the, and the fall, spring and fall, we don't have no fault, we don't...
Who don't monitor, who don't monitor who had a free pickup and who didn't?
Well, that would go into, into the database.
Yeah.
And, I mean, that's, that would be part of it, I have to talk to, in this case, Andy, because he's been working with the company that's assisting us in developing this program.
All right, can we just talk about this real quick, Mike?
Yes.
All right, so the, the charging, the charging hours, and I know this is all hypothetical, so maybe I shouldn't even ask it, but I was looking at that last, the last sheet, the one that's got all the...
Yeah.
Refugees, uh, assistant foreman, one hour, three hours, four hours.
Right.
I guess that's what that means, is that what that means, quantity?
Yeah. If, did you look at the, uh, uh, second page of that? That kind of explains, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm just saying it might, might address the question that you here may have. It, it sort of is a frequently asked questions.
Oh. No.
I don't know if it addresses.
Yeah, okay.
No.
Those frequently, this, yeah. Yeah, there you go, yeah, because I was gonna ask you this. Take, for example, uh, does the assistant foreman go to the help with the pickup? If not, why, why would they spend an hour on a call? That's the sec, that's question number two.
Okay.
Because you're charging somebody a whole hour for somebody to write, I don't know, what does the, what does the assistant foreman do?
It says, hey, pick that pile up.
There's an answer, answer right there.
Assistant foreman supervises the crew, he usually operates the, the, uh, front end over, that's the wheel over, it's the front end over, and will not travel from side to side. They're like, like me, I'm one of the operators, and Kenny, one of the operators.
Oh, I see, that's right, yeah. Okay. I got it, I just gotta...
Or, or, like I said, or out there supervising the crew, especially if it's in a tight area or whatever.
Right. Yeah, so if you were there, say you're out there, you're helping these guys, you know, in a tight area, and then they go, okay, you, you look at it, and you say, okay, everything's good, I'm moving on to the next job, you guys clean this thing up, and I'll meet you over two fifteen Wallback Street, you know, in a half hour. Yeah, but you wouldn't charge, would you wind up charging them a whole hour for being at that job site?
That, that depends on what they...
You know what I'm saying, Mike, how is that, if you broke down, you just get a boom, one hour, by a matter of...
I might be here fifteen, twenty minutes to see what's going on in the spring, and go to the second site, but once they leave that and that, I normally double back to see the job that they done, if they did any damage, or did they clean up good enough, or anything like that, because I hate the complaints, oh, they picked this stuff up and they left this mess here, they didn't rate, they didn't do this, and that's what, I normally double back to see.
Okay.
Well, that's also why we have that picture before and after, right? And those pictures are all date and timestamp.
You guys, you guys take pictures before and after?
Yeah, I do.
I, I, I didn't know that.
That's what, that's what these tablets...
And that's what the tablets are for now, too.
That's part of the, that's part of this record-keeping system that we have, and data management system.
That's cool. I didn't know that.
See what I'm going through, don't you?
Well, which will also, and it's, quite frankly, it protects us in a sense also, because we have documented uh, evidence that, uh, everything was picked up.
Privacy and all that stuff.
Also, if other people are planning on, because this is something that we're here, I've heard quite a bit during this summer and that, where someone says, well, I put these couple of things out there, and then, before I know it, you know, somebody else is putting something else, yeah.
Oh, well, I'll add to that.
All right, I don't have any more questions, I appreciate you guys coming, and...
It's a good start.
I think we're getting this moving one step at a time.
Just to say that, that the whole, at least, I, I look at this as, uh, in the interest of not, uh, being punitive, but just helping us to cover our costs. That's, that's all we're looking for here, and also that those that are putting out an unusual amount of material, whether it's a rental property or otherwise, that they pay, pay their fair share. That's all we're looking for.
The city, it looks plain, too.
And the city, uh, yes, it's a beautiful city, and it, its aesthetic circuit compromised when you see trash.
Right. And I agree a hundred percent with what we're doing here.
And I think, uh, and I think also whether your person's, uh, you know, home or property is of fifty thousand or five hundred thousand, uh, the value of the property can only be, can benefit from, from, you know, keeping the city looking good.
All right. Okay, workshops over, thank you, Andy.
All done. Thank you for working hard, just make it sound like...